Previously read plus the following. We have a change in start date for Edward Burns Detective and the Detectives Bureau. The start date will be effective October 21st now. And Benjamin Holzinski, salary increase, system administrator in Department of Emergency Services to rate of $3,129.72 by weekly effective October 27. And Brianna La Liberty as a salary increase planning officer in Department of Emergency Services to the rate of $2,126.65 by weekly effective October 27.
Go move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those salary board transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Are you in all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, so move.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Introduce yourself.
Yes, sir.
Proceed.
Audrey Fortna, Director of Lebanon County Probation Services. Good morning, I am here to present two grant applications to you. I will start with the juvenile grant aid application for fiscal year 2425. The amount offered by JCJC this year matches what was offered last year, and that is $193,314. We are able to utilize up to 10% of that for operational costs. We have denoted approximately 7.8% this year to be utilized in that manner. The rest will be used to offset personnel costs. Any unspent operational costs can be moved at the end of the fiscal year toward personnel costs. I have left the signature page at the front desk. If you approve, I respectfully ask for your support.
Make a motion to approve that application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this motion? Yes.
What exactly juvenile grant and aid, what does that do? What do you use that for?
So, at least 90% is for personnel costs. It's to help support the personnel costs of the juvenile unit. We are able to use up to 10% for operational costs. What we're utilizing it for this year is to help offset like communication costs for our cell phones, for the officers, training costs for the officers. For needs-based budget, you have to build that out. Any new programming has to be built out two years in advance. So this, for small programs, is a nice stepping stone. So two years ago, for instance, we utilized it to start the fishing program, our juvenile fishing program, which is now covered by needs-based. A couple of years ago, our community treatment center had a garden when they were located out on Grace Avenue. And when they relocated, they didn't have the room. So we're going to try to start on a smaller scale, a garden at our office. So there are funds built into this, at least for the next two years, to get that up and running. So those types of things.
Great, thank you.
Yes?
Ma'am, a little bit about small space gardenings. Try the techniques on the square foot gardens. You can be very successful in a very small space.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, anything? See nothing? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we will move on.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
Is that aye?
Sorry.
Support?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Continuing county probation and parole grant for fiscal year 2425. This is for the adult unit. PCCD has implemented the new funding formula, which they've been working on for the past few years. And as a result, our amount has increased a step. We are now receiving $97,711 this year. I'm hopeful that that will continue to increase. This will be utilized for personnel costs, and there is no match required. It is my understanding that Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Coon are working on the new signature requirements. Thank you very much. We haven't gone that route with the juvenile grant aid yet, but I have a feeling that's not far off.
We're getting there.
Okay. This grant is due October 31st. I can submit it without the signatures. They just won't process it until we have all of that finished. I respectfully ask for your support.
Okay, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the county probation parole grant for $97,711.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Are you in all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same sides, so move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning.
As you get situated, you may introduce yourself and then proceed.
Thank you. My name's Dan Lyons. I'm the Program Director for the County's Redevelopment Authority. I have a few pieces of business for the Community Development Block Grant Program. This is the end of the fiscal year 2024 cycle. We will be applying for the county's entitlement allocation on November 1st. And leading up to this point, we accepted funding requests from Lebanon County municipalities and public health agencies. This year, all eligible applications were able to be funded in whole, and that was the recommendations we made. We advertised that budget in the newspaper and held a public hearing yesterday. And so the first piece of business would be to adopt this application resolution, which authorizes the submission of the application to the Department of Community and Economic Development in accordance with the budget that was advertised.
Make a motion to approve that application.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any questions for Daniel? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same sides, so move.
Thank you. The second item is the Fair Housing Resolution. This is a required component of the CDBG application, but it's a standalone resolution that commits the county to comply with the Fair Housing Act. This is part of the application every year.
Make a motion to approve Fair Housing Resolutions.
Second. Motion is made and a second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same side, so move.
Thank you. I also have a resolution to approve modifications to older CDBG fiscal years, 2020 through 2023. This is mostly just moving funding around. We did have one public service provider who relinquished their allocation. They were proposing be split to the other two eligible public service providers. We had a project in South Lebanon Township that came in under budget. We'd like, South Lebanon would like to use the excess money for a housing rehab program. This too was spelled out in an advertisement that was in the newspaper. We held a public hearing on it yesterday. So I would like permission to submit that, those budget modifications to the state, please.
Make a motion to authorize permission to authorize those modification requests.
Second.
A second motion, I do have a question.
Yep. Okay.
On the summary for the $490,703, I don't know if there's a page. I don't know that there's a page number on it, but it's closer to that. It has down that, and I did read it somewhere in the body, that both Lebanon Family Health Services and Volunteers in Medicine will be getting increases of like $10,000 or $12,000. Yeah. Was that something they requested, or did we just do it out of the goodness of our heart? Or?
This is based on our recommendation. So this is the oldest open fiscal year for CDBG money. And Mid Pen Legal Services had an award. They had an allocation of CDBG.
You redistributed.
And they, yeah, they're unable to spend it. And we have only, we have mere months until that contract expires. So the recommendation is to take their allocation and divide it equally between the other two public service providers that are funded in that fiscal year, because they can spend the money before our contract expires. And with only a few months left, there's really no other activity that we can do that would be completed in time.
I guess the follow-up question to get to it, I had to get to go through the first part. Is that guaranteed then in successive years?
No.
They didn't cut themselves out completely?
No, Mid Pen?
Yeah.
No, they're welcome to apply for funding every year.
Okay.
They, unfortunately, this is the second year that they have failed to spend their grant.
Oh, really?
So we did this last year. Yeah, they had an award in fiscal year 2019, came down to the wire, they couldn't get it spent. So we had to turn it over to the other agencies. But they are welcome, they're, you know, they may apply every year.
Okay. I'm fine, I just couldn't remember.
Yes, sir.
Is this motion just on the 2020 modification or the 2020 and the 2021?
It's actually all four fiscal years in one resolution, 2020 through 2023.
Okay.
A little bit of movement in each one of those four years.
Okay. On the 2021?
Yes.
The South Lebanon Township?
Yes.
The $25,000 is going to housing rehab. Have they identified somewhere, or is this an application process, or how are they going about that?
This is existing owner occupied housing rehab, and they have identified three residents of the township who they think can use this funding. One of them is already on our list to receive assistance through the Whole Home Repairs Program, so we know they're eligible and they've been waiting in line. We're in the process of qualifying those property owners.
Okay.
But the township came to us with three names.
Okay. And are those, if I recall correctly, the eligible area in South Lebanon is the Avon Heights area?
Well, actually with-
Or could it be anywhere in the township?
You're correct, that's the township designated low income area. But with the existing owner occupied housing rehab, we qualify the individual property owner, and they can be located wherever in the township.
Okay.
As long as they meet the income qualification.
Okay. And similar question then for Mill Creek Township. Process there?
This is brand new for Mill Creek Township. There's one person that the township supervisor had in mind, that they're referring to our office. But anyone in the town, in Mill Creek Township is welcome to apply. There's no waiting list at the moment. It would be first come, first served. The, one of the supervisors had somebody in mind. They haven't gotten in touch with our office yet, but they're just, they're looking to help whomever they can.
So is there a public process other than a supervisor referring someone?
There can be. There's not one mandated. So this will be, this is, you know, advertised publicly and discussed and voted on at their supervisor's meeting. They can choose to do advertisement for that program specifically. But they haven't directed us to do that beyond what was made public during the modification process.
Okay. But that's up to them? That's up to the township?
That's up to them.
How much they publicize or how much they put out there?
We take direction from the township and from the county. They don't have a lot of money in that program.
Yeah.
So.
Well, $65,000, it looks like, right?
Yeah, which could be-
So how does South Lebanon do it? In terms of, I mean, they have, from what I heard, they have applicants who have been in the process.
They had-
So they have, you have some already identified people on a waiting list.
That's right.
More money comes along, you know, naturally you go to that list.
Yeah, and with South, so the, we administer the countywide Whole Home Repairs Program, which helps county and any municipality. And there were two South Lebanon Township residents already on that list.
Right.
So we started there. And then the township has other people that they become aware of, you know, that people that reach out to them or that they become aware of for one reason or another. These two, like, if it weren't, in the case of South Lebanon Township, if they weren't up against this contract deadline, they may not have gone, they may not have funded their housing rehab program because of the countywide Whole Home Rehab Program.
And Mill Creek has not had a program prior?
Correct.
So you have a referral, and then, but then the referral has to apply?
Correct.
And you've not received an application yet?
Also correct.
So what, so, and you only have months?
Not in the case of Mill Creek. Their, their program will be funded out of the fiscal year 23, so they have three years yet to spend that money.
But it's up to the township on whether or not they want to advertise?
It's first come, first served.
Okay.
But it's up to, you know, if they, it has been advertised, but if they want to do marketing, that's up to them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We good? Jamie?
No.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so move.
Thank you. And then the final resolution is for an updated citizen participation plan. This is a, a plan, one of several, that the Community Development Block Grant Program requires us to have. Making minor updates to it. The state puts out a template every so often with what they think should be in the plan. This one specifically adds Mill Creek Township to the plan. It allows us to do hybrid public hearings, so we will all, we will continue to have public hearings in person. But this allows us to have a Zoom option in addition to that if desired. And it does have some emergency stipulations if there's another disaster declaration that would allow for flexibility with the required lead time to have in public hearings and so forth.
Make a motion to approve the updated citizen participation plan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same side, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. We'll get those signed and-
Thank you.
See?
Yeah, come on in. Let me do this one first, if you don't mind. This one, you can do it first. Right there.
Oh.
Square.
Just didn't see it, didn't see it. Well, we're very happy to insert this into our agenda. It's a loss for the county, but quality of life stands before you. And we have a proclamation for Mr. Ott, for his service to the county.
Whereas, Michael L. Ott began his career with the Lebanon County Correctional Facility as a, employed as a part-time correctional officer on December 15th, 1996, and later became a full-time officer on January 12th, 1997. Whereas, on March 12th, 2006, he was promoted to Training Officer. And on May 4th, 2008, was promoted to Captain and was the prison SERP leader. Whereas, Mike received a promotion to the position of Deputy Warden of Operations on February 11th, 2019, and later transferred to the Department of Emergency Services, as has Matt Chief, on January 8th, 2023. Whereas, during his tenure, Mike served the county with devotion and commitment, performing his duties and responsibilities in a professional manner. His skills and leadership have been appreciated by the county. He's been a valuable and dedicated employee. Whereas, on October 24th, 2024, Mike will retire from the Department of Emergency Services with over 27 years of distinguished service. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of past boards of county commissioners, past and present employees, and all our citizens unite to thank Mike for the outstanding service he provided during his many years at the Correctional Facility and the Department of Emergency Services. Further extend congratulations and best wishes for a most rewarding future and very best retirement.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Motion to adopt this proclamation.
Motion to approve. Thank you very much.
Second, a motion with great appreciation for your service.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same sides, so move. Congratulations, Mike. And do you have anything you'd like to add, or Mr. Dowd?
I'd just like to add that we are glad that we got to have you for almost two years. Very close. And, you know, your career is impressive, and wish you the best of luck in your career. Thank you. Don't forget to come back and say aye. No, I won't. It's like Jerry Garcia said, what a long, strange trip it's been. 1996, I just was looking for a job with stability and some benefits, and I was fortunate to have that. I worked under a lot of great individuals that helped me get to this position. Made a lot of great friends and contacts at the prison and had a lot of great years there. And that molded and shaped me. Brings out a lot of your strengths and weaknesses, but I was very fortunate. And then to get an opportunity to work at DES, just a bunch of great individuals. And it's a real, real blessing to be involved in two organizations within the public service field, at the prison and at DES. The county has something to be very proud of, and we have a lot of great individuals at those two places. So just happy to be a part of it.
Thank you. And both the jail and the DES are better for having had you in their midst. And they have a nice cheering section back there over your phone.
We just want to make sure he gets out.
They're to escort you.
Yeah, there's no sense of, yeah, they were just-
Would you like to proceed?
So unfortunately, you have to smile one more time.
I'll take the first picture. All right. Good.
I don't know how he gets it all done. Everywhere I go, people are, you know, they're always calling on him. How many times have you heard in Lebanon County people say, "Get off"?
That's it.
Mike was rehearsing that this morning, and so that's very good, Mike.
Good morning.
Yeah, I thought, whoa, it's early for jokes.
All right, Jamie.
I have exemption requests for disabled veterans eligible for real estate tax exemption. They are Kenneth Core of Woods Lane, Palmyra; Terrence Rule of Garden Avenue, Lebanon; Frank Bier, III, of Worth, Worth Street, Lebanon; Holden Sizneros of Mayflower Drive, Jonestown; Adrian Rodriguez of West Main Street, Anvil; and Adrian Khan of McGillstown Road, Anvil.
Make a motion to approve the disabled veteran exemption request.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and I, just as an update, I believe this puts us in the over 500 properties that have been exempted due to veterans being totally disabled. So we're proud that the rest of our taxpayers are subsidizing these and proud to do it on behalf of these veterans. Any questions?
Is that all at one time, or is that over the course of?
In one time, no, we're just doing these at this time.
I'm sorry.
We're just doing these today.
500, is that currently?
Yes, that's, that's-
That's current.
Yes.
Cumulative number. Some may have dropped, depending if they're deceased or anything, they drop off.
That's why I wondered if it was all that we approved, or if that's the current number.
That's an exemption number.
That's an active number, I'm sorry.
That's an active number. Yep. Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same sides, so move. Jamie, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we would adjourn our meeting?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Did we clue this one from a district attorney? It was on my desk this morning.
No.
No, that's a request.
That's just a personnel request.
Okay, so we didn't have to vote on that?
No.
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. Meaning not today.
Not, okay, so it's not on today's agenda?
Correct.
That was my question. Thank you.
Okay, so we will look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We stand adjourned, and now I will pass the gavel to our Chairman of Assessment Board.
Hello, Dan. Welcome. Call the meeting to order. If you would like to proceed, I know there's just one exemption request, is that correct?
Correct, correct. This is an exemption request. We had heard the appeal back on October, let me look that number there. October 3rd, and they submitted some extra information since then, and Matt got to look over it, our solicitor. And it is, the appeal number is 2025-C-10, and it is property at 1078 Gravel Hill Road, Grantville, PA. And it is Keystone Service Systems, and they were asking for exemption on the Susquehanna Service Dogs facility that they have at that property. And I'll just pass it to Matt here to give his recommendation.
Yeah, and I, I had a chance to review the allocation and the letter that was submitted by counsel. And included in your packet, I have a memorandum in which I recommend that the exemption request be granted.
Okay. Is there a motion? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve that exemption request.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Of course, meaning of the Lebanon County Board of Elections to order. We'll open with any public comment? None? We approve the minutes submitted from September 19th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments regarding those minutes? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Nice habits. Thank you, and we can move on. Any, well, maybe introduce yourselves for record and proceed with any updates you have for us.
Sean Drasher, Director of Elections.
Joyce Scarborough, Deputy Director of Elections.
All right, we have a general update for you. As you may have noticed, it's quite busy. First of all, LNA went off successfully, no hitches. It went quickly, and we're very pleased with the results. So that's all filed away. We'll be attesting to the final results for LNA, just, which means just showing that we did all the work we were supposed to as of today, so that'll be submitted. Matt, did you want to?
Yeah, I wanted to provide just a brief legal update, but I don't know if you want to continue.
Nope. Okay. You can go right ahead, I'll, I'll jump in after.
Okay.
Just, yes, LNA, would you mind?
I'm so sorry, I do that every time, logic and accuracy test.
Good morning, Matt Beagley, County Solicitor. I did want to provide the board with a very brief update with regard to where we stand on lawsuits that were being filed throughout September and October pertaining to mail-in ballots. There, as you may recall, over the past several years, there's been a lot of movement in the courts, both the state courts and the federal courts pertaining to whether ballots which are missing a signature or a date should still nonetheless be counted. In September, Lebanon County, along with the other 66 county boards, were named as a respondent in cases that were filed with the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. These cases were essentially to seek clarification from the Supreme Court and to seek a determination on whether or not these ballots nonetheless should be counted if they are missing a date or a signature. This, these actions were called King's Bench petitions. You're essentially asking the Supreme Court to take up a case from its inception. Now, in both cases, at the beginning of October, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court denied the King's Bench petitions. They essentially said that they will not be- They essentially said that they will not be changing the, the rules and the laws pertaining to an election during the pendency of an election and since voting had already begun. So where the law stands right now is that undated mail-in ballots are not to be counted. Additionally, mail-in ballots that don't contain a signature are not to be counted as well. And in the orders that came down from the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, they indicated that they would not be making any, any changes between now and, and Election Day regarding how counties count and process the votes. So I did want to just provide that very brief update. I've been working closely with Sean, we've been advertising several, several items, including the public inspection of the machines, which will be next week. We will be convening, obviously, for our pre-canvas at 7:00 on Election Day, November 5th. And also too, I did want to note, because it may become pertinent this year, the recount provisions. If, if there is a, if, if the total between candidates for either president, US senate, or any of the statewide races is less than one-half of 1%, then the Secretary of the Commonwealth will order a recount of all 67 county boards of election. And so I've begun to look into that process to make sure that we are ready to go if that occurs. And so I, I just wanted to make the board aware that we are moving in that direction, just making sure all of our, all of our i's are done and t's are crossed in anticipation for the election.
So the, in the event that an automatic recount is triggered, if it, if it come in under half of 1%, there, we would not be doing a full election recount, we'd be focusing in on the one race, and that is something we can do from a technical point of view to make it a lot easier if the pastor would do so. So it wouldn't be the first time we've done this. We'll, we'll have hopefully plenty of time to turn that around once they announce it. It wouldn't be a next day thing. In it, so as you can see, it is very busy out there. We've added additional workstations in the office. We have more to add, we've run out of space to add more people, like just physical space to set up more computers at this point. We've added another phone line, we've doubled up on all of our extra temporary help, and we would be, we have people ready to go for even more, except we just don't have space to put them right now. So I think though, with the spot, the space that we have, we're doing a pretty good job. System limitations that are outside of our county keep things from going too fast, unfortunately, in a number of ways, and other counties have been impacted in a bigger way than we are between the parties, doing voter registration drives locally and simple database limitations. There are counties around the area that are recording three to four hour waits for same-day voting, and we're doing about 15 to 20 minutes, so I'm pretty happy with where we are right now. In, in addition to doubling up on our temp workers, our poll worker count currently is at 100%, fully staffed and ready to go. As fast as we have someone get sick or have to drop out, we have two people waiting to replace them, so we're doing well with that. Canvassers, we're at 130% of where we wanted to be, which brings up one possible question that we'll be exploring in the next week. We have enough people, we could expand our footprint if we can find a place to put people to process the ballots on Election Day. So I'm not exactly sure how to accommodate that, but we're, we have the staff, rather than turn them away, might be something we'll be exploring. We could use any space we want. There's, there, other counties that have double or triple our number of voters don't necessarily have everyone canvassing in one room, they will spread them out across multiple rooms or sites to do so. So we've never had to do that before, but I'm thinking with the volume that we're going to have this time, I'd rather bring in the extra people since they're available and find more space for them. So I can talk one-on-one with you guys about that online. Fine. For the booth, we have 100% coverage of the booth, and we've also doubled up. I know, Joel, that was something you had discussed in the spring, we're doubling up on workers there to keep things moving, and just for another layer of security, and because we just have such a waiting list of people that want to help, so I'm comfortable with that. And finally, the raw numbers. Please accept my apologies for not dropping these in your box sooner, they're changing so quickly that as fast as we generate them, they're off by a considerable number. So as of this morning, your raw numbers are, you had 14,876 actual ballots sent, that number will go up considerably by the end of this week, and you have 6,051 that are returned and recorded. So that's a pretty good percentage, we're way ahead of where we normally are in this part of the election cycle. And I'll give you, I will leave hard copies of this, but just know it'll be outdated by the end of the day today. You have 2,421 Republican returned and 3,010 Democrat, so the Republican return rate's at about 39% this morning, and the Democrats at 44% overall for the county, it works out right about in the middle of 41%. I have one other number I think is, unless you have a question. The number that I'm very excited about is we currently, as of this morning, have 94,716 registered voters, and there's no reason to believe we won't be at 95,000 by the end of the week.
Mike, I just, while we have the benefit of the press here, would you mind just, the shed, you mentioned the drive up.
Mm-hmm, yes.
If you could just go through the dates and the process for that, and also early voting, there's still some confusion with people, they think they can vote anywhere, but they can only vote here. Just to clarify those things, and what they must bring or show up with in order to do it here, and just clarification on some of those finer points.
In no particular order, the, the shed is, the, the outdoor drop-off point is open and available since the 7th. It is staffed 4:30, 8:30 to 4:30, and doubly staffed, 8:30 to 4:30.
Monday to Friday.
Monday through Friday. And it is doing robust business out there, but they're moving people very quickly. If they want, if voters want anything done besides dropping off their ballot, they'll have to come into the office, and there are some lines right now, but it's not constant, we do some laws. To vote in person's a little confusing in the state of Pennsylvania, there is no early voting per se, like in other states, so to vote early, what we do is we have people come in, fill out a mail-in ballot application, which I know bothers some people, I understand that, and then we hand them their ballot on the spot, and they are able to write their vote at one of the privacy areas out here, and we collect it immediately.
And you said bothers some, I've overheard in the hallway where they're, they don't want to fill out a mail-in because they're here, but it is the, one and the same application.
It is. To vote early, you have to fill out a mail-in ballot application.
And they could do that up until when?
They can do that up until the 29th of October.
Question?
Yep, I just have a question. So what prevents?
Could you identify yourself?
South, South Lebanon County. So what prevents that person then from not going on the polling day?
So everything is tracked immediately, so any, when someone votes early or votes by mail, it flags their record so that when they go on Election Day, that they're already flagged. Someone, it's not unusual on Election Day for people to come in and say, "But I didn't really vote," or, "Or I sent my ballot in and it wasn't recorded," or something like that. And in that case, they would be directed, they, it's still marked, but they would be directed to vote provisionally, and then we would investigate post-election to make sure that there was no double voting.
So you don't run, I don't know that you run books anymore, because now it's on an iPad, so you don't run those numbers that flags them until after the 29th? Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, right up until, right after that.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that I kept you informed. I don't want to hide anything. Through my caucus at the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, I've been involved in filing papers, and I tried to keep Sean informed, but I'm not allowed to correspond necessarily if something would come to a vote, so it's kind of sketchy. But anyhow, there are two that are still active in the courts, so I want to make sure that you are aware of that.
I'm sorry, I don't understand any of that.
It, it goes to our, you know, must it be dated, must it be signed, those kinds of things.
You signed on to a support letter?
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Litzit signed on to an amicus brief, which doesn't necessarily mean it's that you're a party to the lawsuit, it just her, along with other county commissioners, signed on advocating for the court to take a position one way or the other.
But I just didn't want it to be a surprise if, you know, anything would come of it.
So this is the issue that you said that will not be debated any further by the courts?
Yeah, it looks like the, the cases that, in, in which Commissioner Litzit signed on to the amicus brief, there, there will likely not be a resolution in those cases before the election. Those cases will, will make their way through the court system in their natural form, and, and as we received indication from the Supreme Court, they are not, they have indicated to the counties that they do not want to change any, any rules and regulations at this point, now that we are now three weeks, less than three weeks from Election Day. The other point I did want to mention too, because I realize a lot of people only vote every four years, and they only vote in November, the ballots this time around have to physically be in our possession by 8:00 PM on Election Night. The only exception is military and overseas ballots. As you may recall, last, last presidential election, there was a, a ruling from the Pennsylvania Supreme Court that allowed the counties to accept the ballots up until Friday, as long as they were postmarked for Election Day. That is not the case this year, so it is imperative, just sort of as a public service announcement, that, that people know that they have to physically be here by 8:00 PM to be counted.
Which is why, a big reason why we have the shed outside, to make it easy, so if people are, it's the last day, you don't even have to come in the building, we're going to get that ballot in, so. That's what I have.
Anything else for the good of the order? I'd say this is one of the challenges as Board of Elections and county commissioners, that there's, you know, the possibility of continuing lawsuits and, and courts sometimes intervening, and it's clear to me that the Constitution states that should be a legislative process, judicial, so anyway, we'll have to wait till the, all that works itself out and, and modify our positions as may be necessary, but anyway, for right now, we aren't counting any undated or unsigned ballots, so that should be a notice to the public to make sure that you can do that.
But it, it could change if the courts hold.
That's what I was just saying.
As I think Matt, Matt and I have repeated, oh, I'm so sorry. As Matt and I have said over and over again, we are following the law, like we're not expanding the law, we're not, we are just following the law.
The question is, the law has continued to change, as interpreted by courts.
But that shouldn't happen any longer.
We don't, yeah, we think we're the holding pattern to post-elections.
Yes. So the change that we experienced the last time, almost constantly, has, has pretty well ceased.
Yeah, at least for this election.
Right.
Anything else for the good of the order? Not, I want to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourned, thank you. Good luck. Come on, Sean, if you have a minute. Very good there, Don.
See, I can't do that. I keep saying I want to do it, and then I'm like, no, I need to go in. It's just not the same.
How about, well, how about Monday?
I guess maybe because I just love my polling place, so small. We only have like four residents.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And probably.
You don't do the headline?
I hope.
They're all made of suggestion. And I'll tell you right now, that I spacked around some people after.
You know, it's like, that was very, it's, you know, I'll say misleading, that there's, you know, it was because the quotes that Sean gave were, hey, we're going to follow the lies of this right now. But I immediately knew that you didn't do that.
But like, if, if you look online, it's, it's, I, I would say Harsh Put Fair headline that we have on there, and then you look in the physical paper, and I, they're new, is what I will say, and they got an earful from me, so.
Mr. Coons?
Mike? I have a big question for you. I've become aware recently by contact with young people that may not be in the public service, therefore, why is that?
What is that big, long stories you just published?
It's so much. I get, I get grief for it, but everyone says, no one wants to read articles that long, but to get to what's going on, I have CTC, that was long.